It got very quiet all of a sudden.
It got very quiet all of a sudden. Hi Alicia.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, you're also getting jacked up?
Mr. Andrew.
Yeah.
Me too.
I have one of those in the car.
Cheers.
I have both, I bring them both in here.
That's awesome.
I'm gonna grab Andrew.
Oh yeah.
Oh, I did not know that.
Alright, have to be smarter than the roll call device.
Oh, you're the sec- you're the secretary.
The chairman's going to, uh, record us in the pledge.
I'm trying to get the recorder to start.
I missed something.
I didn't know either, so you're good Mike, you and me, we're just in it together.
Shane, you know how to start this recorder?
Yeah.
It looks like I can find no button that says on or off.
How about record or stop? IT. Your twelve year old grandparent? No, I mean, that's what I do with my phone.
Alright, I've got a little after four o'clock, this call this meeting to order please. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For tonight, Andrew has been asked, he asked to be excused for, and then also normally his replacement is Becky and she wasn't available, so he's going to take the minutes from the recording, that's why it was really important I get it going. And then also Rick's gonna handle the roll calls for tonight, so here we go. Roll call for attendance.
Okay, so doing the roll call for tonight's meeting is Rick Gunion, so I am present. Mike Kelly?
Present.
Josh Hewitts?
Present.
Mike Reeder?
Present.
Krista Stillwell?
Present.
So we're all in attendance, and the meeting can begin, thank you.
You've had an opportunity to read the minutes and make any comments or corrections that anyone wants to make, otherwise we'll look for a motion to approve.
I move we approve the minutes.
Motion by Krista.
Second.
Second by Mike. Roll call Rick please.
Okay, roll call. Oh, excuse me. I was making notes, I apologize.
Okay. For approval of minutes, we need a vote.
Okay, so Mike Kelly?
Aye.
Josh Hewitts?
Aye.
Mike Reeder?
Aye.
Krista Stillwell?
Aye.
Myself, Rick Gunion, aye. So I'm gonna be a creature habit, I'm gonna go around the room.
Okay.
I love that, thank you.
Just so we get it done.
Don't matter how.
I don't know if there was a moment of safety assigned to anyone, does anyone have anything they want to share or whetherwise today we'll pass on that today?
Uh, I mean, I don't know what safety minute is or what qualifies or not, but I mean you and I saw these guys in action the other day.
Go ahead, just talk about that.
At Suncrest, they had a fifteen kilowatt.
No. Fifteen KVA? Big, big.
Transformer go bad, early or probably overnight, in early morning hours. And these guys were there early, PJ was there, I know. And they got it swapped out and the school repowered, probably in less than, I'm gonna call it nine hours. It was extremely impressive. You know, I can't say enough about it, I went home and I told Stacy about it, she probably didn't care. I called Todd and told him all about it, and he's like, you know, I've been telling you how good these guys are. And it was, it was really, really awesome to watch, so. I can't say enough about how good a job they did and how impressive they were, they worked together as a team. And it was really, really neat to be able to see that, so. I don't think people realize how lucky they are to have a locally owned utility company because that turnaround time on a project that big is incredible. You know, most people, if a pole goes out, if you're not in a locally owned municipal territory, you're waiting for hours on end, even longer than what that took, so it was very impressive.
And to add to that, PJ, your guys putting the generator in to get that lift station back up and running, very, very well taken care of too.
And from the safety standpoint, we're watching all this big heavy weight up in the air, people making sure that they're clear. I mean, it was impressive that they could move, and that thing was, I mean, it really made some impressions in the ground out there even. So it was, it could have been a very dangerous situation, but their training, I think, is over the past few months and years has paid off that they were able to pull that off very safely and very quickly, so thank you guys again. Alright, Andrew doesn't have an office report, and Karen is working a kind of a modified shift. And she reported to me that there was nothing that she needed to report tonight. And so we'll go to electric Phil.
Well, appreciate your comments, and I'll make sure I pass it on. And to your note about a local utility. There was a pole hit down from me and I don't live on our system, and it was reported at roughly nine o'clock Saturday night, and they fixed it, they got there at noon yesterday to take care of that, so. You're correct, I mean, people in this community are blessed to have everybody local and quick response times. So that being said, we had a heck of a week, we lost two residential transformers during the week due to failure. And I can't say if the heat did it or what did it, but I'm sure the heat didn't help out any. So on the storm Saturday night, the trouble man and another lineman were out changing a bad transformer right before the storm hit. And then when the storm hit, and it was reported over the scanner for the police and fire, we had five poles down on twenty eight east between twelve thirty and thirteen hundred east. So I live pretty close to that area, so I responded as well. And then it come across to us that there was a person trapped in the power lines in a vehicle, which was true. And it was raining so hard that this guy drove up on it, and then where the lines were coming down, he was probably from the distance between us of hitting the pole, so. He was lucky, he was shook up, and we got him out of there, and then we was able to secure the poles for the night. And then the guys went up this morning and they got them all changed out. So that kicked, that kicked the line out, there was a safety device at eight thirty east and twenty eight, and that re-closure did its job, it, when the lines come down and made contact with the ground, it did its job by kicking the line out, so we was isolated from eight thirty east, east going down twenty eight, and then a little bit north and south, and up into Tipton County, so we probably had fifty to seventy-five people out that whole time. But we had everybody back on by midnight, and then we moved on and took care of all the other calls. We left here a little after four o'clock Sunday morning. So we had some damage at four fifty west up into Tipton County, and back on the state road twenty eight, four fifty west and eleven hundred, four fifty south and eleven hundred west, excuse me, in Tipton County. So we left that area of the twenty eight east and went up there. Then we just had some scattered outages that come in also in that area, so everything was isolated to that corner of the county. And Hillsburg Fire Department stayed with us the whole time and kept the road closed, and then the Sheriff's Department left one deputy up there to keep the road closed, so that made it nice and safe for us. We didn't have to worry about putting flaggers on the road at night, and so we had twenty eight shut down for probably three hours. Then Friday morning, we'll backtrack from Saturday, Friday morning, the Suncrest School call, it come in, I think around five sixteen, and then the guys called me a little before six. That's when we went out and they already had it isolated and knew what was going on, but the size of the transformer weighed around roughly twelve thousand pounds. So we had to get a local crane company, and on your pictures, the crane that started out with was a lot more bigger and impressive than the crane that ended up, but when he got there, he said, I'll tear the curb sidewalks up. He's worried about the infrastructure underneath the ground, so we made the right judgment call by waiting a little bit longer and getting the other crane in, but we had the school and the lift station back up and running by three eighteen. And then other than that, we started a new line rebuild job on six hundred south just east of eleven hundred east, setting new poles, new hardware, and transferring the conductor. So hopefully this week won't be as dramatic as last week.
I know the school was also very pleased with, Dave Faust was on scene there also, and kind of made sure that everything was inside the building was ready for it to be re-energized, and that was pretty important too.
You open those doors up on the inside transformer, there's a lot of wire going on, and we had, the way it was metered and the lift station being involved, we had two different things metering, so we had to drill the sides of the transformer, get all that transferred. So, but it was a quick turnaround.
Yeah, it was.
Real quick.
Do we ever have data that tracks response times versus averages of?
We've got, when we get a call from our call center.
Yeah.
It logs.
Yep.
When the guy was called, and then every thirty minutes, if he's by himself, it does a safety check. And then when he gets help, then he can, it's called a lone worker ticket.
Right.
Then they'll stop lone worker ticket. And then when we're clear, we're always good about calling in and saying when the power's been restored, and then when the job's complete, we go home, that's all logged.
Yeah.
And then we keep it, we print all that stuff out, and then we have our own outage reports that we keep in case, you know, like somebody ever wants to do a system reliability on, want to bring business to town.
Yeah.
Just for what you're asking, what our response time is and stuff like that, so that's all kept.
Cause I would love to see it comparatively, just like you guys were just talking when a pole went down and it took, what, eighteen hours for it to be replaced, right? I think again, that just speaks to our strength and could be something that we could share on a regular basis about how our response times, what we average, and how quick they are comparatively speaking.
Then once a month, I get a report that our dispatcher here keeps, tells how many calls, how many customers are out, how many minutes is out, stuff like that.
Yeah, I would love to see one of those sometime, if you ever want to share it with me, I think that'd be really cool data.
I'll think about it.
I'll think about it. Thanks Phil, noodle it over for me, will ya?
Anybody else have anything else?
Thank you Phil.
Yep.
One of the things, if I may, one of the things that seems indicated to me, and I don't know where we stand in this regard, and pardon my voice, but just for the fact that we happen to have a transformer, a replacement transformer, that the size and type needed. It would be a question, at least in my perspective, what are the major transformer types and styles that we have in our system? And do we have all those types and styles covered with a spare, or certain ones? Or do we know where we can get one from a local?
So on the residential inventory we keep, those are pretty, what do you wanna say, cost effective? And we have to keep that amount number on the dock. But on these bigger industrial transformers, the price of them, we have a few of each size, but we can't afford to keep one for, you know, every customer in the industry that's out there. And then some of them in the industrial park, we meter it and then they own their own transformer.
Yes.
But if we used to ever get in a case where, like the other day, we knew we had one, and the only fear was it wasn't gonna fit on the pad, because when you buy these transformers, they'll send you the spec of what seam and pad needs to be, because they take in old transformers and then they take the cases and they refurbish them, and then sell them back out. So my only fear was it wasn't gonna fit on the pad, which it fit on the pad like it, I mean, it was perfect. So there's ways to get around that, if we didn't have one, we'd just start calling our neighboring utilities.
Okay.
And our system voltage is different than a lot of the others, so we'd have to rely on Richmond or Anderson or somebody like that to get one.
So it was only a few selected utilities that would have a similar system power distribution?
Yeah, because you have to match your primary voltage with your.
Yeah, okay.
With your transformer.
Well, that's a good explanation, I appreciate knowing that, thank you.
Alright, anybody else?
Nope, thanks Phil. Shane?
Excuse me, a lot of time's been spent working on email clients on people's desktops, keeping that up and running. I have been working with ACCS and they've been helping me out quite a bit. We believe we found what the problem was and applied that solution Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday of last week. So, knock on wood, Friday was kinda quiet. I had to work on another two computers again today, keeping their emails up and going. Right now, it's just looking for what's the best opportunity, what's the best solution going forward to get this put to rest for the issue. And the issue is just the Outlook program on people's desktops. Most of it affects people with two or more email accounts. Sometimes it happens to somebody with one email account, but mostly it's multiple email accounts on the computer, so. Like I said, right now, we're just trying to get things to settle out and hopefully get better. Instead of running everywhere like I had been. Rick, you wanted to know about password resets?
We had talked about periodically letting us know how many users are delinquent in maintaining their password yet.
I haven't had any delinquent, I have had one password reset.
Okay.
The password, the user went to change their password, successfully changed it, went to log back in, and they couldn't log in. So I called ACCS, they reset it for me, so, I mean, it qualified as a password reset. But it wasn't because they, by any fault of their own, they tried.
Good to know, thank you.
Also received information from McGowan Insurance Company, it's an annual thing. I just gotta finish filling out the IT portion of it and send it on back to the city so they can finish putting in their information, but other than that, plugging and chugging I suppose, keep them busy. Any questions for me?
I just wanna publicly thank you, cause I know how hard your last few weeks have been, and I think you've worked very diligently and unfortunately had to put some of the things you actually want and need to be doing with your time aside to help keep everybody running, so thank you for all your hard work on that.
Thank you, it's appreciated.
And I owe you an apology, the last time we talked about this during our meeting, I complained about the process and having to change my password, and then with not having a complete understanding of why that is, and so shame on me, I totally understand it now and it makes complete sense, so anyway, I just wanted to say sorry, man.
No, no problem, I appreciate it. Anytime you guys got questions, just feel free to give me a holler.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to bore you with all that technical stuff.
Well, and I'm a part of the group that I can't access my email now on my desktop computer, only on my iPad and my phone, so at some point in time I'll get with you, but I know I'm not a priority, so.
And you're absolutely right, it works great if you're on the internet, using a webpage, or if you're using a cellphone or a tablet, it's perfect.
Yep.
It's just that.
It's the Outlook app.
Just that Outlook app.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks Shane.
Water.
I'm glad I don't have the Outlook app.
So, not a lot to report, maintenance crew had one main break over on West Morrison. Got that fixed, it was a pretty good sized split. That's the second one in a pretty short period of time on that main. So kinda looking into some options there, is what we need to do going forward, you know, taking inventory of how many problems we've had in that general area, and kinda taking inventory on that. Other than that, maintenance has really been normal service work, installing meters, keeping ahead of everything out at Meadow Brook. And then there's been a few others for some contractors that have been building homes here in town, so keeping them busy that way. As far as our meter department, they got the rest of our new meters in, we received those actually last Thursday. It's about fifteen hundred plus, five eighths meters, so we've already started putting those in the ground, getting the rest of those going, so we can continue with getting those in before, you know, they lose their shelf life.
Yeah.
So that's going on there. The pump room, normal, normal testing as usual. We do have a aquifer study going on right now with some test wells that we had drilled. They, Peerless Midwest is finishing those up, that was part of what they were doing originally. They just hadn't had a chance to get the aquifer study done when we drilled those, so just getting a model of what that looks like. And then Armstrong Street, they are bored underneath the creek, they are also bored up to Clay Street now. So the eight inch pipe is in the ground, they were working today to get some of the tees in, to start with some of the service lines that run back towards the creek, that main is too deep. It's actually thirty-five feet deep, if you were to measure off the bridge. So that is coming up at a real hard angle, we have service line, or a secondary main that comes back on each side because of that depth that makes it capable for us to work on, to feed those homes. They were working on those tees and those tie-ins today. Wanna thank everybody for being patient with us, because we've had the road shut down and closed, and parking moved and everything, and everything's worked out great. Community's been great about not throwing a fit, haven't had any problems that I'm aware of, so everything right now is going pretty smooth.
Thank you, can I ask, could you clarify a little bit? You started out by talking about the number of new meters, new water meters, right?
Yep.
Tell us more about that, is that the conversion to electronic read meters, or what are we?
It is, so going from a manual read meter, they're a newtating disc, if that means anything to you, I can explain all of it if you'd like, but they're a manual read meter, now we're going ultrasonic. We have been in the process of that for about five years now. The remaining ones that we have ordered are a little different than the ones we initially ordered, they are stainless bodied instead of composite bodied, but they are finally all in. And so the reason that we are just now getting the rest of them, and it's been that kinda time span, is again, there is a battery life on these meters. So you don't want to get all of your meters all at once, slam them in the ground, and twenty years from now, all of them go bad.
Oh, that makes sense.
So, it's actually been broke up so that it would work out to where you're not doing a mass change all at once.
Makes sense. One of the benefits of that, as opposed to your meter reader walking the streets, opening each cover and looking at the readout and recording that, tell us about what the new process is with the electronic read meter.
So they are, they are cell reads, so what that means is basically that comes across the billing officer's computer or the meter shop's computer. We have the capability of seeing a ton of different data, everything from temperature to pressure to usage down to every fifteen minutes. So if somebody has an issue, within a fifteen minute span, we can tell when that water was turned on and off. Again, it's, the amount of data you receive off that is huge. The ultrasonic side of that, meters a lot, I guess the word would be finer, I can get a lot lower read than what a regular manual read would be. So we're able to see leaks a lot sooner. Pressures are another one, we can actually see pressures in a system. And then as far as the actual meter readers walking around and seeing it, again, it's all sent every fifteen minutes to a computer on what's going on, so you just pull it for what that timeframe was on your computer as opposed to somebody being, lifting every one. Now, there's obviously up and downsides to that, but a lot of good comes out of it.
So in terms of municipal water in the city limits, the residential and small apartment building, I guess is what you're converted over, is that correct?
And the industrial park.
And is it mostly industrial park, or all?
Not all of the industrial park is done quite yet, but it is, the meters are there. It's just, we work with the industrial park on when their shutdowns are, so we're not shutting them down.
Okay, so even the larger users, the water users would have electronic read meters in the future? So we get more data, better data, more accuracy data, or finite data and small numbers, quicker notification of leaks and so forth, and also reduction in the labor needed to take the meter readings. A great reduction in that, right, so a lot of benefits?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep, the downfall is, is that you don't see those meters every month like you see now. So figuring out how to make that to where you incorporate, the meter shop's still seeing those meters on a regular basis, and we know problems as they're happening, instead of walking away and forgetting about them too. You know, that's kind of the downside, and figuring that process out.
Oh, I wanted to ask you to expand on that a little bit, so that folks that are viewing this electronically or maybe had questions about what it was you were talking about, get a little more context on what we're doing there in that program. And as you say correctly, it's been just right at five years into doing that conversion. So we're well on our way, and good to hear, good to hear, so thank you for that.
Would you possibly have a picture of one of those meters?
I have several in the back of my truck right now.
Oh, so I could take a picture, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Perfect, that'd be great, thank you.
Awesome, I don't have anything, no.
Alright.
You should've brought one in for show and tell.
PJ?
So we had a pretty big repair to do on filter six, and it is complete. It's hard, kinda, kinda hard to explain what happened without you guys knowing what it looks like, but basically the whole vacuum system was somehow overnight got drawn in around the wheel and pulled everything from the floor and twisted everything, so we basically stripped the whole filter down to nothing, cleaned the cloth, which is, it's not very pleasurable. It's dirty and it's not fun, but they got it done and it's back online. And about a day after that, we lost the transducer in filter three. We got one ordered and it's back, we actually received it and put it in today, so it's back online. We serviced all the mixers, there's twelve of them, the very first one we pulled had a bad seal. So we were, we were expecting more than one to have a seal that needed repaired. It's actually got sent to Xion because there's partial warranty on it. The other eleven, we did have to buy some stainless steel chain because the cable that they suspended the mixers on, they were breaking, so we replaced the cable with some chain. As far as sewer maintenance goes, they had one sewer call, and it was on the owner. They helped the park with the concrete project, replaced a ring and lid on Jackson, repaired a catch basin on Fifth and South, storm repair on Mash and Kelly, and repaired sanitary man and lateral on Green Street. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Yep.
How about, anything from the lagoons today Rick?
No sir, nothing to report.
Okay, of course, the general manager is not here because we told him not to be here. And.
Cause he probably would be here.
But the two items that he has on his list here are the sixty-nine KV transmission line and the EMPA contract, and those were both. And those were both, uh, first reading was passed at the, um, council meeting the other night. And we'll be coming up on the second reading at the next council meeting.
To clarify, one of those was just a resolution, so one of those is done. I believe that was the KV transmission line that is completed. And then the contract extension, that was passed on first reading.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so the KV line is completed. I have the documents back from Carol, so I just need to get those to Todd to get those to IMPA. And then the contract extension, that will go in front of the council for second reading at their first meeting, uh, at their meeting in September.
So can that be passed in two readings or does it take three?
It doesn't take three anymore. They revised the ordinance, so it's only two readings now.
Okay.
Yep.
So then that'll be processed then?
Yeah, so their meeting, I think, is September sixth, eighth, eighth. Just kidding, September eighth. It's that week though. Um, they will hopefully pass that on second reading.
The approval of claims, payroll and transfers. Would that, there are none that additions other than what we signed that I know of.
Make a motion that we have approved the plain, claims, transfers and payroll.
I'll second that motion.
Motion from my reader is second by Krista Stillwell.
So having a motion and a second, uh, we'll do the roll call. Mike Kelly.
Aye.
Josh Hewitts.
Aye.
Mike Reader.
Aye.
Krista Stillwell.
Aye.
Rick Gunion, aye.
Thank you, Rick. Price is perfect.
Unfinished business, uh, from prior meeting. Uh, the employee appreciation and celebration is finalized. The caterer is in place. The, the location has been approved and the wait and, uh, thank you to the city. They waived the fee for that. And so that's ready to go, uh, September twenty-sixth.
I have a question on that. Um, one of the things that I thought might be kind of cool to incorporate into that. Is to potentially partner with some of our vendor contacts and ask them to come as well, just as. An increased appreciation for their work and collaborating with our team and to give them an opportunity to thank our team as well. Like I know IMPA. Has asked to be a part of things like that because they like to pass along and appear and give thanks to the crews that are making things happen in their communities. Um, would you be open to me extending some invitations on behalf of the USP to do that?
Do we have, I don't have. We, we have contracted for eighty-five meals, okay?
Okay, got it.
Well, we don't have to give them food.
I mean, obviously I'm not talking about inviting thirty additional people, but, you know, when I think about the fact of like Jack Alvey from IMPA and, um, Dirk, who is our community outreach individual. Um, state representative, state senator, I mean, just those kinds of individuals. I don't know how much leeway you have given us from a meal count standpoint, but.
Think about twenty. For, for casual purposes, if I may, um. I'm perfectly okay with, uh, Mr. Alvey, uh, from IMPA. Um, my, my concern with regard to elected officials. Um, certainly the mayor, the, the clerk treasurer, uh, the folks that work closely with us in, in Old Stony are more than welcome as they have been in past years. I, I, I want to avoid the appearance, this is my personal opinion. Um, I want to avoid the appearance of this being a, um, a political, uh, event and. Out of respect for our employees and their time, I, I personally don't. I would draw the line at, uh, elected officials, state representatives, and I would say I would prefer not, but I don't know where the rest of the board stands and. That's, that's my personal opinion, so.
Yeah, I, 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 one that comes to mind is the, like Jarman, I mean, he saved the day.
Yeah.
Uh, somebody, some of those, and if, if you guys that work with these guys every day. Have somebody you think would, you would, you, you want to show some appreciation to them through our appreciation dinner, I'm certainly okay with that.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. Like, obviously our electrical partner comes to mind, but I know that water and wastewater, these other guys, you guys have relationships that I think. They would like to show up to say thank you and in turn we would like to say thank you and if this is our set apart time to do that, I think it would be a really valuable opportunity for that.
So.
I think that sounds great.
If there's somebody you would like to, that you guys work with that you think would like to make sure Krista knows about it, so she can send them some kind of invitation. And I think Jarman is, I just, he, I don't know what we'd have done if he had, I mean. Where else would you get a crane around here?
And he showed up very quickly with not one, but two.
Well, yeah, and so I'm, I'm okay with that.
With the, with the, um, excluding the alleged officials, I'm okay with that as well. And I think in past years, I, I believe, was it last year or the year before. We did invite, um, some of the Lebanon electric, uh, employees that had done some mutual aid. Uh, just prior to the celebration luncheon. I don't know if they were able to attend or not, but we made the effort, so I, I, I think that's fine, yeah.
I think some did, didn't they?
Good, good. So that being the case with the eighty-five headcount, I don't know where that stands with our own people, but.
We'll just cut the portions down.
Oh, Mike.
Alright.
I don't have to eat. I don't have to.
And of course, we.
I'll be there though.
I, I will nominate one, one collaborator who, who's not an employee that we want to include in the celebration luncheon and Mike, should be to your immediate right.
Yeah, absolutely.
At least Alberton, so please, please come.
I will try.
Okay.
Okay, anything else when that, about celebration? Um, and we talked about passwords, uh, the new business preliminary discussion only, we said we review some of the twenty twenty-four pilot resolution and some of that.
I didn't get it to you yet, I'm sorry. I'm looking for them. Oh, you got them? You found them? Oh, great. I, I looked on my system and I didn't find them yet, so I was gonna have to do a deep dive. Oh, perfect.
Could I, could I make a motion to table that discussion, uh, to allow Todd Corey to participate as well? Uh, and I think we got some more homework to do on our side before we get into really, uh, talk about what we think we know, put it that way, so. Would that be okay?
I'll second the motion to table it.
Thank you.
Alright, let's, uh, let's vote on tabling that motion and.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mike Kelly.
Aye.
Josh Hewitts.
Aye.
Mike Reader.
Aye.
Krista Stillwell.
Aye.
Rick Gunion, aye.
Thank you all. Uh, unless there's anything else for the good of the cause, I would, uh, would. Take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Mike and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.